Good evening. Welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, May 5th, 2021. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast live via East Hampton Media on Charter Channel 193 and livestreamed on East Hampton Media's YouTube channel. And as always, we thank East Hampton Media for bringing these meetings to you. All councilors and participants in this meeting are gathered remotely during the COVID-19 pandemic, under an executive order by Governor Baker on March 12th, 2020, over a year ago, allowing us to do so. I remind both the members of the city council and of the public to remain on mute until recognized by the chair. Also, for members of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you are participating in public speak. Thank you. We will now be called to order. Barbara?
Hey, Coniff.
Here.
Ilum Derby.
Present.
Erica Flood.
Here.
Omar Gomez.
Here.
JP Gazinsky. Tom Peak.
Here.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Here.
And Owen Zerrit.
Resument.
Okay, and we'll now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
For which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 21st?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second to approve the minutes of April 21st. Barbara?
Beg Coniff.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
Staying.
Erica Flood.
Yes.
Mo Mar Gomez.
Aye.
JP's not here. Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zerrit.
Yes.
Motion passes. Barbara, just FYI, JP will not be here tonight.
Okay.
Okay, so now we have public speak. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak this evening? We have, on anything other than the public hearings, please raise your hand and we will call on you. You will have three minutes to make your comments. Your comments should be directly directed toward the city council. Is there anyone here for public speak?
Me. How do I get on?
Who are me?
Me's Morgan Mitchell. I can't get my video on.
All right, we'll set you up, Morgan.
Thank you very much, Council President.
And I think it's going to ask you, and you can go ahead.
There it is.
You're there.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, members of the city council. It's strange for me to be on this side of the podium because many years I was sitting where you were. So, over the past week, members of the federal, state, and local agencies, consisting of the Diplomatic Security Service, Mass and Connecticut State Police, Covington Police Department, and our own East Hampton Police Department, bring home a Marine, a statesman, a local Western Mass boy to his family into his final resting place. Thirty-five years as a funeral director. My father has been a funeral director for well over seventy-one. With so many moving parts, we have never seen an operation involving this many moving parts to be so successful. And the family has asked me to thank all those involved, but especially Chief Alberti and the East Hampton Police Department. They wanted me to tell you and the citizens of East Hampton, thank you on a job well done. City should be proud on how a local statesman was treated coming into our community and then eventually up to Covington. But the city shouldn't be surprised here. The East Hampton Police Department and Chief Alberti, when the COVID-19 pandemic hit and reached the epic proportions that it did for the Hoyok Soldiers' Home, while many around pointed fingers at what went wrong, not the East Hampton Police Department and not Chief Alberti, they made it known to all that the veterans who were passing away and dying of this epidemic, the Hoyok Soldiers' Home, would be treated with honor and respect and get the same sort of dignity that a local statesman got. They were escorted back under honor with a police escort back to our community, either by motorcade or by some police officers going to their final resting place at our local cemeteries. Again, this should be something that is remembered because Chief Alberti remembered the veterans, the East Hampton Police Department remembered the veterans. And I'm speaking like this today because it should be known throughout the town what has happened. And we as citizens of East Hampton should also remember. Thank you, city council, for your time.
Thank you, Morgan. Anyone else for public speak? Okay. Let's. I'm sorry, I'm hearing snippets of something. Yes. Okay. All right, moving into, well, we have a public hearing at 6:15, but we can commence with, let's see. Is Janet Tetrow here? No. Paul, do you, will you be able to do the presentation that you have in ten minutes?
I, I think so.
Maybe.
I was hoping for fifteen, but I could try to do in ten.
Well, you know.
It could be five minutes. Do you need to have?
We can go five minutes longer, Paul. Why don't we, why don't we set you up for the presentation on the Telecommunications Committee report? And if you need to share anything, I can make you a co-host.
Yeah, that would be great. We've got some slides here.
Okay. And you can now put your video on, Paul. I took it off because, until people are presenting. Do I have to?
Uh.
Let me see. Here, try that.
Let's see. Oh, great.
Okay.
And where is my? Why can I not share my PowerPoint? Okay. Um, just want to share my whole screen, I guess. Oh, there it is. Great. Everybody see that?
Yes.
Awesome. So, in case you are unfamiliar with the Telecom Advisory Committee, we were formed in 2018 with the purpose of studying different broadband infrastructure technologies, the current market conditions in and outside of East Hampton, and what actions the city might take to ensure that affordable and effective high-speed internet is available to East Hampton residents. Although we, of course, have looked at the current day situation around internet access, we also considered the future of our city, how internet use has changed over time, and what kind of technologies are capable of meeting the needs of East Hampton residents and businesses today and going forward. As a basic overview of what we have found, the primary conclusion was that East Hampton should move toward establishing a public broadband network. One of the biggest benefits in doing so would be the ability to create a network using fiber optic cables. And if we do build something like this, that's definitely what we want to use. Fiber optic technology, it would give us speed and reliability that's far in excess of what is on the market today in East Hampton. It's the same technology that's used for our nationwide internet backbone. Even our worldwide internet connectivity is all on fiber optic. So data doesn't have to be converted. It eliminates bottleneck next along the way. And it would meet our needs, our, you know, internet usage needs for residents and businesses most likely for decades to come. If we, if we did move in this direction, East Hampton would benefit from working with another community that has already done the same thing. And we believe if we did go and build a municipal broadband infrastructure, that this would be a boon for our economy. It would increase the desirability of our city, and it would be in the primary interests of our residents. A municipal utility, it would be accountable to and act in the interest of city residents as opposed to private shareholders. It would allow us to guarantee policies of net neutrality, and we could even help subsidize the cost of internet for low-income households, for students, or anyone who can't afford internet because internet should be available to everyone. It should be a right and not a privilege, and it's part of our, of our daily life at this point. So, when looking at the market landscape, our committee found that the current broadband infrastructure within the city has been struggling to meet our needs. And while much of this study was done prior to COVID-19, the reality of the pandemic has really even further reinforced how inadequate at times our infrastructure has become. We've seen new technologies and trends like remote working, and even like outside of that, things like smart home devices, which are always connected to the internet, you know, driving up internet usage and taking up more and more of like a limited available bandwidth. And that's led to more and more dropped connections, poor quality and inconsistent connections, and, you know, a lot of unhappy people. Looking forward, this problem is only going to get worse with time. But, but there's not really an incentive for a private sector competitor to come in and do anything different. We reached out to some of our current providers, and there's no interest or plan to invest in our infrastructure because they've already got the market locked up. They just, they don't have a reason to do it. So, we looked at several communities nearby which have developed their own municipal broadband. And there's a lot more detail in the report, of course, but basically, if you look at, like when we looked at cities such as like Westfield, Holyoke, Greenfield, and South Hadley, are all nearby cities that have built their own municipal light or municipal broadband utilities. And they have each been successful doing it in kind of their own unique ways. And looking at our own city at East Hampton, we're very fortunate because each of these communities, which is nearby to us and some other private companies, they have expressed interest in partnering with us and helping us do this. And part of the reason for that is that our demographics and our population density, you know, in particular, they're very good. It makes us very desirable, you know, to potential partners. And, you know, the committee is confident that should we pursue a municipal broadband system, that we will have every opportunity to be successful. Now, as part of the study, we took a lot of public feedback, including a survey that captured over six hundred East Hampton residents and business owners. We found that there was a tremendous amount of public support for a municipal broadband initiative. And the great majority of respondents said that they would definitely consider or possibly consider switching. Now, as part of this survey, we asked people to choose their top three priorities with regard to their internet service. And we found that price, reliability, or uptime and download speed were the, the top three of the three choices that, that everyone gave to us. So, let's move on. In order to, to do something like this, we would have to create a municipal light plant. And as I'm sure you know, East Hampton voters in 2019 voted on that year's ballot initiative to, you know, to give the city the option to create an MLP if it so chooses to do so. And this would allow East Hampton to provide services or partner with another community to do that. And outside of internet, it would also allow us to invest, if we so chose, in other, you know, utility-based things like, you know, power generation or solar energy, if it made sense for us in the future. And even if those things don't make sense for us now, somewhere down the road it might. And so it really just gives us a lot of options moving forward in what the city can do and how we can serve people within East Hampton. So obviously, the cost is the, the big question most people have about what it would be to build this kind of utility. And it would be a multimillion dollar project. We estimate that the total cost would be around, you know, ten, maybe twelve million dollars to East Hampton to do the entire city. That's a preliminary estimate. We do think we could do a, a smaller pilot program for between one and two million, most likely improve the model. But that cost would not have to be spent all at once. It could be spread out over many years. And a network could be built incrementally. This is what a lot of cities have done. So once you build a small, you know, network or a certain area, which we would call fiber hoods or typically called that, that network starts to bring in revenue, and then that revenue can be reinvested and the network can expand organically over time. However, you know, any debt that we do take out, we're, we have to pay. I mean, there is a risk involved in, in any kind of borrowing, you know, and it's, you know, it's an obligation that we would make, which would almost certainly be covered by the revenue from the service. But if it weren't, we would still, we would still be responsible to cover any debt, of course. So if we did want to move forward, we have several next steps that the council can consider. We think that the, we should at least establish a municipal light plant legally and appoint like an MLP board to continue evaluating this, to take bids on, you know, an engineering and design study and to evaluate those things when they come in and report it back to the council and the public. And doing this wouldn't cost us anything, you know. And if we decided that we ended up not wanting to, to go in that direction, we could dissolve the board and it's not, you know, it's not anything, doesn't cost us anything to do it. But we do think that we should get a, a detailed engineering and design study, including a full utility poll survey. And that would have to be done by a private contractor, but it would be, or, you know, maybe a different MLP. But that would really help us nail down like what it would look like for us from like a nuts and bolts perspective, what the real costs would be for us, and give us an idea of like what kind of unique challenges or benefits we have from an infrastructure perspective. Prelimarily, we think that we're very well situated because of the communities around us that have already done this, that we can tap into other fiber networks and create redundancies throughout the network. And because we're so near to these other cities which have done it through partnering with them, it creates economies of scale, so it brings down the cost for everyone. It's beneficial for them and it would be beneficial for us as well. And once we would have, you know, more of this kind of information, a more detailed engineering and design study and poll survey, we could make a business plan that would, you know, plan to implement a sustainable, a self-sustaining municipal fiber network, you know, and, and then we can move forward if we so choose. There are, you know, potential grant opportunities from state, federal, or even private entities that we might be able to take advantage of that would help us with the costs, either through the police preliminary costs of getting this kind of study done, you know, an engineering study, and even up to actually building the network itself. A lot of the money that we've seen historically has been for very low population dense or rural communities, but that is starting to change, and there's more money that's opening up that we might, East Hampton might be able to take advantage of. Although, even if we didn't have access to federal funds, it's completely feasible. But this kind of projects, you know, we could do ourselves and it would be successful. Like it, it wouldn't be an absolute, you know, death knell to us if, if we didn't have federal money. But I, it does seem realistic that we'd be able to get something that would help us along the way. And so that's it. I don't know how long that's been. I hope I had ten minutes for you. Yeah, if you've got any questions, throw them my way.
Do any of the councilors have questions? I'm going to start with one, Paul. I thought, and maybe Tom Peak is the right person to that, but didn't we a couple of years ago create a municipal light plant? Isn't like in name only?
Well, we, um, we did, so we had the city council voted in two different fiscal years to approve the creation of a municipal light plant, but as a ballot question. So it had to go, so that allowed it to go on the ballot.
And that was approved.
Kind of like a preliminary like approval, and yes, it did. And the, the residents voted by an eighty-one percent approval to support the creation of an MLP. But I believe that we still need to take another step to actually like, you know, create it from a legal perspective. I could be wrong on that, but I do believe that is the case. And we would have to create a board and appoint a board as well.
Counselor Peak?
Yeah, it's, there's just some paperwork that we need to fill out with the state to like actually formally legally establish that as an entity. Which, you know, I think that there's good reasons why we, we maybe haven't yet since we've, you know, the, the committee has been working on this report. I would just also like to point out that if, if there's, if you want more detail on this, we did write a full report with a lot of detail about our findings and our interviews and the survey and all that, and that's available for everybody. In fact, I believe it was in one of our earlier packets.
Yep, was. It was, it was interesting reading and lots of it. As I recall. Counselors Eric, and then Counselor Rist.
Thank you, President Coniff. Paul, fantastic presentation. Thank you so much. And thank you to the entire telecom committee and obviously a nod, as always, to Counselor Peak for his initiative to get this going. You mentioned the overall cost. Thank you for including that. Is there a minimum investment that would be probably required to, to get a project like this going? What would the seed money be in order for the minimal kind of rollout? And then if you plan to do some sort of incremental fiber hood type of approach or something like that?
Oh, so, I mean, again, it's, it's hard to give a, like a real firm number, you know, until we have some more information from, you know, the kind of the engineering and that. But, but we think that for, that like to really build a network that would reach, you know, a reasonable area, like I said, it'd probably be around a million to two million dollars, I would, you know, which would start generating enough revenue. I think it could be expanded. What we've seen most communi- communities do is they would do that, and then once it's so successful, they get, you know, and so many people get excited about it and they want it, they end up then borrowing chunks of money to build out, you know, further network, you know, and, or just reinvesting their own revenue. But that's, I mean, that's, that's a pretty, I think, conservative estimate. I'm not overstating, I think, what it would cost us for that at all. We might be able to do better than that. It really depends where we'd want to build it and what we'd want to do. And if we went after like a really dense area, I mean, we would expect a lot of revenue from it. But we do have some rural areas, obviously, within the city too, that also should get the service.
So. Counselor Rist, and then Counselor Rothschild.
Yes, Paul, thank you so much for this report. I was following up on what Owen said. I think a feasibility study might be in order in the sense that maybe somebody who knows a lot about this engineering or somebody that you could hire, a company that might give us more definitive numbers, timelines, et cetera. That doesn't cost a million dollars, but if, if the committee could get an idea of who that would be and how much that would cost, I think it would be in the city's best interest to perhaps fund that study. Because once we get a definitive dollar amount, et cetera, we might be able to get this going. And I'm going to encourage the committee to, to not wait on this. Let's, let's get the paperwork done. Let's get this MLP done and, and let's get that feasibility study. So we have some real numbers on what this engineering will cost, what the designs will cost, and what the pilot program will cost. But you're going to need to get us better information, I think.
So, if I invite Dan, we did talk to a couple of different groups about what it would kind of cost to get that done, to get like an engineering study and to get more of a feasibility study done. There was a private group that we spoke with that gave an estimate that we thought was maybe a little high, but they thought between like a hundred and two hundred thousand dollars. But then we had another group that gave us an estimate that was, I believe it was under twenty thousand. That was another local MLP that would want to work with us. And so, you know, and I, I'm not entirely sure what scope that would be. I think there's some flexibility there. But, but, you know, we're definitely looking at a few tens of thousands at least to get that kind of information that we would want in that way. But I agree with you. That's what we should be, we should move along that way.
I just want to follow up that that's money well spent if it's, you know, between twenty and a hundred thousand. I, I know there's plenty of places for money for us, but getting a fiber optic network in this city would be fantastic. And it would really reach people who are underserved right now. So I encourage us to get an idea and maybe present it to the mayor for consideration. Thank you.
I feel like we probably should have put this topic under a public hearing just to, so we could have like unfettered questions to Paul because we're kind of under the gun right now. But Lindsay, go ahead.
Um, in terms of fiscal questions, I would love to see some data from other cities in terms of when they started getting their returns, like a graph of the money out and the money in, so we could give some projections to ourselves and the residents when we would start to see returns and what that looks like over time in terms of our return on investment. Also, I was wondering if there were any examples in other communities of subsidies provided to residents towards their wifi, like, like there is towards other utilities?
Yeah, absolutely. So, the, with, with regard to the subsidies, the, we've seen at least Greenfield has subsidized the cost of internet access for students through the pandemic. They also offer a discounted rate of service for low-income residents there. So it has, yeah, we've seen that done locally. We haven't seen like Westfield or Holyoke doing that or, or South Hadley, but it's, it's possible to do it, absolutely. And yes, we've seen it there. And what was the, what was the first part of your?
Oh, about fiscal projections about the return on investment and like, oh, just a kind of a graph of when that starts.
So we, we asked everybody for as much detail as they would give us, and we specifically asked for that. And we were generally told that that was not information they could share. But, well, overall, but what we did find, like, we got a lot of information from Westfield specifically that each of the fiber hoods or areas that they expanded into, they met or exceeded their projection and their minimum, you know, success rate in order to, to make a profitable investment there. And they also found that when they did survey different areas, whether or not the survey showed a high rate of, of interest or a low rate of interest, that when they built the network, the actual success they had was consistent with their survey results. So it proved the model. And that was really important, you know, for, for them and for us to know that these, you know, surveys have accuracy. They have real-world correlations.
Thank you. Yeah, I definitely, I mean, I'm so glad we already had the vote and we know that the residents are behind in this type of initiative. I, I'm excited to the fact that we would control in terms of being able to help residents with wifi. And that was, I know we were really frustrated during the pandemic and Charter's kind of lack of wanting to help. So it'd be nice to be the ones controlling that. Also, in terms of pilots and how we prioritize fiber hoods, I'd love to start with, like you said, the dense ones, but also looking at income and prioritizing our, you know, most at need resident, residential areas first. So thank you so much. I'm psyched for what might be coming.
Absolutely. Well, thank you, Lindsay.
Um, Paul, thank you. That was so helpful. And I, I, I want you to come back and I want to have a more back and forth kind of dialogue farther down the line when maybe you've gotten a little more information about the return on investment, things like that, that would allow the public to also ask questions. We don't have that forum right now and the way we're doing it tonight, but it might be something, certainly not next week or anything like that, maybe, you know, later in the summer. We, we should have a deeper dive maybe on this, but great work.
Absolutely. Madam President, anytime. I'd be glad to come back and talk with you guys or with the public. And I'm really happy with the work our committee done. I'm really happy with the response from the community. I think this is very exciting and so, so glad to be able to come and speak with you all tonight.
You bet. You look well, Paul. Glad to see that.
Thank you. I'm very well.
Okay, I will now take a motion to open the public hearings.
So moved.
Thank you.
Motion second over the public hearings. Barbara?
Ilum Derby.
Aye.
Erica Flood.
You're on mute, but I could.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zerrit.
Yes.
Beg Coniff.
Aye. Public hearings are now open. First one is the Joint Utility Poll Location Discussion on Park Street and Main Street. Counselors Eric.
Thank you, President Coniff. This, there, as you know, we have two poll location discussions tonight. This first one on Park Street is essentially moving a pole that would be in the way of the, the rotary for the, the new Maple Street project. It's essentially just moving it out of the way and out of the location of the, of the rotary there. We discussed this at the last meeting. There really were no issues with this, this. We discussed this at the last meeting. There really were no issues with this this poll. I believe this one was Mr. Vanner's poll. And the committee voted two nothing. Counselor Kuzinski was not available to meet to recommend to the city council to approve this poll location.
Again, are there any questions from any of the counselors? Is there any questions from the public?
Yes, Bob Parent for South Street. My wife and I live at Four South Street. We own not only Four South Street, but the parcel at 197 Park Street. And also the triangle zero par zero South Street, the triangle between Park Street and South Street. One question I don't know if the counselors can answer or not is, I don't know if this pole is a pole that has already been relocated. Because there have been new two new poles installed already that we look out our window and we can see. One is located in the triangle, which was directly adjacent to the existing pole. So I believe that was strictly a pole replacement. There then is a pole that is located directly opposite the roundabout, which may be the pole in question. I don't, I don't know that. I do know that there is a street light that is proposed on the opposite side of the roundabout, the downhill side of the roundabout. So I'm not certain if this pole is that pole. And if it is, I do have one comment on that. If it's if it's basically to confirm what's already happened, have no comments. If it's to install a new pole on the opposite side of the roundabout, I do have one comment.
Counselors Eric.
President Coniff, I could, if it helps, I could share my screen to better illustrate this.
Sure. Yep.
Okay.
Oh, I need to make you a co-host.
Okay. Okay, can you see this?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So the 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 polled in question is, can you see my pointer on this? Okay, the the pole in question exists here. It's basically right next to the White Brook entrance. This dotted line here is the piece of property that we acquired from this 198 Park Street parcel from Williston and in that property exchange that was a couple summers ago, I believe. This is the existing pole and we are moving it to this spot here. The the verbiage is a little confusing, but the dark, the dark circle with the dark X through it will be the new location. This is the old location. And as you can see too, this is northerly or more towards town of the White Brook or Mountain View entrance. I don't know if that helps. And then Mr. Vanner is here to to probably answer any more specific questions.
Mr. Parent.
I got follow up. Unfortunately, I'm still a little bit confused because the the pole the counselors Eric referred to as existing, that's no longer there. That's clearly gone. There's now a roundabout, or at least that, you know, the edge of the roundabout constructed there. The pole that used to be there carried all the telecommunication power, telephone, et cetera. Primary and secondary lines down Park Street. All of those lines have now been relocated to a pole located really right at the corner of, I believe, 199 and 197 Park Street. And if you watch those operations, basically, again, everything that used to go across Park Street now stays on the opposite side of Park Street and is hung on that new pole that was installed. Probably, I think the pole 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 went in in the fall, but the wires were finally completely transferred, probably a month or so ago at this point. So I'm a little bit of a loss as to the purpose of the new pole that is requested. Then secondarily, given that all the telecommunication and power going into the new school is installed underground. I'm wondering, you know, what the need for that pole might be. So I was, I was surmising that was there for a street light, because there is a street light being proposed at the roundabout and there should be one at the roundabout, obviously. And I don't know if anybody can answer the questions regarding the purpose, because as I said, it doesn't, it doesn't really seem to seem to fit with what has already been constructed on site. If that pole is to be a street light, I guess I would ask, and it's really not the council, it's more the school building committee, to consider using the underground conduits that already exist to avoid stringing a new overhead line across Park Street. Because there was extensive work and there's multiple spare conduits that come down the utility pole in the point of the triangle that was was installed as a new pole and I believe were available. So I guess it would be a shame in my mind to have everything undergrounded going into the school and see a wire running across Park Street that may not need to run across Park Street.
Mr. Vanner could answer these questions.
Mr. Vanner, are you on? I don't see him.
He was here.
His name is still on the.
Yeah, his name is still there.
Oh, there he is. I'll ask to unmute him. Mr. Vanner. Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
There we go.
All right, sorry. So I believe what has to happen is that new pole needs to go in so we can bring the wires across and then go underneath. I believe that's the point of having that pole there is it's rather than going under the road, you need to have that pole across to bring the existing lines over and then you can go under and up the driveway.
So, Madam President.
Yep, go ahead.
So Mr. Vanner, then the pole that Mr. Parent is referring to that was installed across the street. It was a temporary thing so they could build the roundabout. And when they put the new pole in, all those wires will be moved back over the street as they were before. Because that's the only way, if I understand it, you can access the underground conduits. Am I correct in that's what you're saying?
That is my understanding as well.
I don't know, Bob, if that helps you.
It's still unclear. And for those that know my background, I'm not a, I'm not a utility engineer. But I am an engineer and been doing a lot of related work for a lot of years. So I generally understand what I'm seeing. There was another new pole installed. If you look at the word South Street and basically right between where the Ts are, right at the point of the triangle. And there are drops that come down that pole that go underground. And there are a couple of spirits that extend just a foot or two above the ground. And there were road cuts put in place that ran lines from that pole into the roundabout or into the the roadway around the roundabout. So that, I believe, is how the school is getting fed. So again, that was why I was surprised when I saw what happened in the field and then I saw the pole request that appeared inconsistent with what had already been built.
Okay. Are there, is there any other, do you need a response? I'm not clear on where we've landed on this. Are we, go ahead, Counselors Eric.
Sorry. The only thing I would say, and unfortunately, I don't see any representatives from the school building here. I was going to suggest if this wasn't incredibly time sensitive, that we could continue the public hearing in order to make sure that we have a clear answer for Mr. Parent, especially considering he's essentially in a butter and or at least local to the project. And I I think it, these questions certainly didn't come up. We did grant a previous easement for electrical down, essentially down the north side of of the driveway to Mountain View School, which is what Mr. Parent's referring to. I don't, it's not clear exactly. I'd have to go back and look at those plans, if those extended into the street. And it does appear that there once was a pole there. So I don't know if there was temporary underground utilities and this pole makes them permanent as Counselor Rist had indicated. But that's my input.
That's entirely up to the you, Counselors Eric, if you'd like to continue the public hearing. Counselor Rist.
I just want to point out that I understand from the school building committee in a meeting I attended last night that the roundabout work is going to begin next week. I believe all of this pole location underground conduits has been engineered previously by the engineers involved in the roundabout and the school building. I think it would be presumptuous of us to think that we could change it at this point. I think we should get Mr. Parent the information. But delaying the vote, I don't think will delay the result. I think if there's another way to do it, I don't know. I just feel like we should vote on this not to delay that roundabout further. But I I I don't know.
Well, we can, we can take a motion and see where that leads. Counselors Eric, do you want to make a motion? Or do you want to continue the public hearing?
I mean, I just want to make sure that our member of the public is satisfied. I I would, I would echo what Counselor Rist said that that I'm assuming this pole was proposed for a purpose. And if there were other options available, including burying, burying utilities under the street, that would have been the option. So I I can, I can certainly obtain more information. I would agree that I don't know if it would change, if it would change the plans. So I would make a motion. I'm happy to get information. But unless the council feels strongly, I don't think we necessarily need to to try to continue this meeting. So I'll make a motion at this time then. Let me get the exact language. I would like to make a motion at this time to relocate, make a recommendation by the council to relocate one jointly owned pole, number T54 slash E54 to a point on the easterly side of Park Street, approximately 135 feet southerly from the center line of South Street to accommodate a city construction project and to provide for the distribution of intelligence and telecommunications and for the transmission of high and low voltage electric current.
Motion and a second to approve the pole relocation on Park, Park Street. Any further discussion? Counselor Rist.
I just want to say, Bob, I have your email and I'll connect you with the engineers and get you those answers.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Barbara.
Erica Flood.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
Okay, Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Hey, Coniff.
Hi.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Motion passes. Moving on to the utility pole location on Main Street.
Thank you, President Coniff. I'm just pulling that up. This is a request to locate a new pole. If you could, can you still see the the map?
Yep.
Yeah.
This is a request to locate a new pole. As you'll see here, it looks like a wagon wheel. This is an existing pole here. The purpose of this pole is essentially for potential expansion. Mr. Billado is here from Verizon. Although it was, this is most likely more so, these are jointly owned poles by Verizon and EverSource. And the, this pole would be just for potential new expansion equipment. We discussed this. There are no notable line of sight issues and or any other concerns raised. And so we made the recommendation to zero in our committee to allow, to recommend to locate this new pole, T45 and a half, E55M.
Peg isn't on. I'm going to ask in her place if there's any questions from the council. Seeing none, is there any comment or questions from the public? Sorry, Peg, I took over for you.
That's what I needed you to do. Okay.
No questions from the public? You can have a motion then.
Okay, I'll make a motion then to, for the city council to endorse placing one jointly owned pole, number T45 and a half slash E55M on the southeasterly side of Main Street at a point approximately 185 feet northeastally from the center line of South Street. This will provide bid span support to the existing pole line, provide for the distribution of intelligence and telecommunications and for the transmission of high and low voltage electric current.
Second. Motion a second for a pole relocation on Main Street. Any further conversation? Barbara.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
I I think it was an I.
Okay.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Hey, Coniff.
Hi.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Erica Flood.
Hi.
Motion passes. And I believe that's all we had, Counselors Eric, for your portion of the public hearing. Counselor Rist. You're on mute, Counselor Rist.
Madam President, we have a $1,000 request that came from our city clerk. And it's to cover the cost of final end of year advertising and the possibility of another meeting in June, which we hope we won't have. Again, if all of this, if any of this funding is not used, it just reverts to free cash. We, we voted three to zero to fund this. We felt that Barbara knew what she was doing. And although we do have some ordinances and things that might be needed to be advertised prior to the end of the year, she felt she had enough funds. As I said, the finance committee did approve it.
Any questions from the counselors? Any questions from the public?
I I just want to let you you know that as of the bill that you're going to sign today, you have $160 left in that, the legal ad to the end of the year. And that's, that won't even do one ad.
So we'll be seeing you back here, is what you're saying.
Not if you approve this.
Oh, I thought you said even after we.
Oh, no, 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 no. Right, right now, there's $160 left.
Oh, I get you.
That's why I'm looking for this money.
I hear you. Okay.
You want a motion, Madam President?
I would love a motion.
I move that the full council approved an interdepartmental transfer of $1,000 to be transferred from the reserve fund. $1,000 to be transferred to the city council clerical account, $75 to the city council advertising account, $925 for the following purpose, to provide funding for the city council legal advertising for the rest of the fiscal year. Also to provide clerical coverage for a second council meeting in June if needed.
Second. Motion second for a interdepartmental transfer for city council advertising. Any discussion? Barbara.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Hey, Coniff.
Hi.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Erica Flood.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
Motion passes. And I believe that's all we had for the public hearing.
I move the public hearing to be closed.
Second.
Motion second to close the public hearings. Barbara.
Dan Rist.
Yes.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Yes.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Hey, Coniff.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Erica Flood.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Motion passes. Public hearings are now closed. We'll resume our agenda. We were at communications from elected officials, boards and. Motion passes. Public hearings are now closed. We'll resume our agenda. We were at communications from elected officials, boards, and committees. And I believe that, uh, I'm not sure who, I think it was Counselor Flood, maybe, uh, who invited Janet Tetra from the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership to do a kind of a rundown on what their committee does. So, Jana, if you are here, go ahead.
I am here. Good evening, everyone. Um, so, uh, yes, Counselor Flood asked me to come to speak, uh, just to give the public and all of you, though I feel like you've seen me enough in the last couple of months that you are familiar with the, the partnership, but the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership is an advisory committee of the city of East Hampton. Our mission is to support and promote fair and affordable housing in the city. We, um, you know, we're a pretty active committee. We meet on the fourth Thursday of every month at 6:00 PM and our meetings are recorded. So for folks who want to get a little, uh, you know, a flavor of what we, the kinds of things we talk about, they are available on the East Hampton Media site and our minutes are posted on the city's site. But so generally, we support affordable, affordable housing and fair housing activities in the city. We speak on support of affordable housing developments in the city. Sometimes developers, they're not a requirement. Sometimes developers do meet with us first, and so we often, you know, meet primarily, I would say, with some of our nonprofit developers in the region. So Valley CDC may come to us to talk about projects that they might want to do, either to build affordable housing or in some cases apply to CPA for housing supports and programs. So we serve as an advisory group for those kinds of kinds of activities. Many, you all know, the council knows that the city recently completed a housing production plan, but for the public, the housing production plan is a sort of state regulated document that cities and towns can opt to do that does a community needs assessment on affordable housing and then lays out some very clear goals and strategies of how the city could meet the needs of affordable housing. So the city of East Hampton recently completed its third housing production plan. And so the housing partnership really uses the housing production plan as our, our to-do list and our priority list of things to work on. And so we have been meeting over the last several meetings to talk about what are the action items in the housing production plan? And what are the kinds of things that we want to work on and what are the kinds of things that we want to support? So things like the accessory dwelling ordinance that is coming up, other changes to multi-family zoning. Those are kinds of things that the housing partnership is really interested in and would come to support at, at public meetings. And then we have some of our other, you know, strategies that we might decide we want to work on that are related to the production plan. We have six members. I probably should know that. But we are also always looking for new members. We're also happy to have folks who are just interested in learning more about affordable housing or what the partnership does to attend meetings. To just, you know, listen or ask questions or find out what we're up to. And, you know, we, again, we are pretty active, so we, we tend to try to get a lot of things done. Really proud of the work that we've done over the last thirteen years that I've been on the partnership. Um, and we've been around for longer than that. We started as a committee and then became a partnership and merged with the Fair Housing Committee, I think maybe four or five years ago because our, our missions were very similar. So it made sense to merge the two committees. I'm happy to answer questions, but, um, you know, folks are happy to always, you know, visit us. It's easy to visit us on Zoom these days, but, you know, someday maybe we'll be back in person and we always welcome in-person folks too.
What time are your meetings, Jenna, on the fourth Thursday?
They're at 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, okay. And you, you actually answered my question was how large is the, the partnership and we, I won't ask you to name who's on it, but that gives us a flavor. Do you know if there's any openings on it personally?
So it's a this is an interesting question because we just talked about this recently. A few years, we used to have a nine-member seat. And it was very challenging for us to have nine members and recruit nine members, and we are usually quite stressed out about having nine members. And four or five years ago, when we merged with the Fair Housing Committee, I thought that we had changed our charter to eliminate the number of seats so that we could have five people or nine people. It didn't, you know, we didn't, it didn't matter, but I'm not sure that Barbara agrees, knows that, so I think we might have a discrepancy.
Yeah, I think, um, I, I don't have it right in front of me, but I think that there is an administrative code that combined the two. I think there are a couple openings because I keep the boards and committees vacancy up to date. I think there are a couple. But I, I'd have to look to see exactly what the administrative code says.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Do any counselors have any question? Counsel Rothschild.
Hi, thanks for coming, Jenna. And Counselor Flood invited you as part of the appointments committee because we want prospective members in the community to hear about serving. So what would you say to a prospective member in terms of, is there like certain skill sets or how can anyone contribute? Like, can anyone contribute? What do people need to care about or want to be interested in or work on? To be part of, to enjoy work, to be a good fit with the committee?
Sure. Um, I mean, I would say you don't have to be, you don't have to have a background in affordable or fair housing. We do, we are fortunate that we have quite a few members that do have a background in that, but it's certainly not a prerequisite. We would be looking for folks who have real estate backgrounds, banking backgrounds. You know, people interested in equity or social issues. I mean, I really think at this point, I think housing has become such an issue for the region and the city that it touches a lot of people's lives. So I would say, you know, anybody who's just interested. We, um, there is some, you know, background information and things. The housing production plan is actually a great place to sort of get a little bit of education about affordable housing because it does do a great job of, of talking about definitions and needs. And then we've also been talking with CHAPA, Citizens Housing and Planning Association, which is a statewide affordable housing advocacy organization about ways that we can further support the city and residents and providing some education. So they offer an affordable housing one-on-one weekly Zoom. Zoom has made life a lot easier in some of these cases. So that's something that I think is, could be really valuable for folks who just want to learn more about housing and we would certainly, you know, support our members, but also other folks sitting in, you know, the city who might want to learn about it. So.
Great, thank you.
That's great. Thanks, Jen. Counselor Zerit.
Oh.
Oh, sorry, Barb. Counselor Zerit. You're on mute, Counsel Zerit.
I would never preempt the clerk. If the clerk has a question asked before me, I will.
Looked it up and I see that you are a nine-member committee and you have three vacancies.
Also, I was right. We do have six members. Nothing.
Counsel Zerit.
Thank you. Um, Jenna, thanks for joining us tonight and thank you to the members of the appointments committee for this great initiative to invite members of committees to our meetings to talk about what you do. I was actually just apropos of this, of your being here. I was talking to someone earlier about how one of our roles as counselors is to kind of act as navigators for our residents. And so we get questions from constituents and residents that we often have to then direct them to different committees. So could you think of what are the types of questions we might get from residents where we might direct, point them in your direction?
Um, that's a great question. I mean, certainly, um, if you look at what's listed under our little blurb on the city website, you know, we are happy to answer fair housing questions. You know, we're, we're not fair housing. Actually, we have a prospective member who's a fair housing expert, but we you know, we are not mediators. We're not attorneys. So, you know, but we can certainly help direct residents if they have a fair housing question or concern of like what other, you know, nonprofit or state agency would be the place to go. We are happy to answer questions about, you know, definitions about affordable housing. That I think is one of the trickiest pieces for people to really understand because it really is complicated. And so what is affordable housing? Why we do, why does East Hampton need more affordable housing? You know, we're certainly happy to answer questions about that help educate a resident or residents about, you know, what we're talking about, what we're doing. So I would say things like that. Um, you know, the planning department, Jeff and Jamie have my direct contact information, so folks can certainly email me directly or come to a meeting and, you know, ask questions.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jenna.
Any other questions of Jenna? Jenna, thank you. Always good to see you. We've been seeing a lot of you, but always good to see you. And thank you again for the time to come to our meeting. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, happy to do it. Thanks for inviting me.
Madam President, Erica had her hand up briefly.
I just wanted for herself, Dan. Go ahead, Counsel.
I just wanted to say thank you as well, Jenna. I really appreciate your time. And again, this is incredible to just help everybody understand what you do and where the opportunities lie in the city to become involved. So thank you.
Yeah, welcome. Absolutely. Okay.
Thank you.
Everybody. Bye.
Bye, Jenna.
Okay. Any other elected officials have any announcements? And I'm really going to implore you to keep it to a minute or less. Counsel wrist.
Just a shout out to our planner, Jeff Bag. Last night I attended a school building committee meeting. And to make a summary, he had forward thinking of sidewalks that should be installed as the school building is being installed later in the project. And one of those sidewalks extends itself to the northern side of the site and connects with an existing trail, which he hopes eventually would be paved or at least improved. And this connects to the northern section of the city, the new city area. And as an, I call it an equity sidewalk because it allows that section of the city to bike and walk to the school without having to go on city streets. And I, I just commend him for it. And I, they did pass three of those sidewalks to be built and I'm very happy to say that this is a great idea, Jeff. Nice job.
Thank you, Counsel Wrist. Counsel Zerit.
I think Counsel Rothschild had her hand up before me.
I, I called on you, Counsel Zerit. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, President Coniff. Just trying to be recognized. Just quickly, as you know, we're working the piece back together. A citywide cleanup. We had a kickoff for May cleanup month. The this last Sunday, a bunch of us got together with a couple of local Girl Scout troops and cleaned up around the pond and actually impressively, there was not a lot of trash there and not a lot of other concerning items such as needles. We found some nip bottles. We deposited them in the nip bottle bin, which is located in the back corner of Fifty Pace, and I encourage you all to try to deposit those there so we could bring visibility to this omnipresent trash item that we can use this as leverage to encourage the state to do something more about this. This May eighth, uh, there'll be mulching on the bike path by the bike, bike path committee. Barbara reminded me about that. And apropos of that, I just wanted to give a shout out. So far in planning the May twenty-ninth event, we've had help and input so far from pretty much every department in the city. Parks, DPW, police, fire. Our town clerk has been incredibly helpful. And there'll be signups going out soon. I just need to put those together with the little committee we put together. And there's a, there's a plant sale this Sunday, the ninth, from eight to eleven at three and on Main Street to support East Hampton neighbors. And Siri's talking to me. And the skate park fundraiser went well at Fort Hill despite being held in a deluge. So looking forward to seeing how that project plays out. And thank you, President Coniff, for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Counsel Zerit. Counsel Rothschild.
Hello, I just wanted to bring our, your attention real quick to the East Hampton Learning Foundation mini grants that are available. They have, there's only like a month and a half left of school, but if people have an idea they want to throw together quickly, you can still get funded to do a mini grant. What they're looking for is creative ideas to enrich education for kids during outside time during the day. It could be for any age group. So if you go onto elfhelps.org, you can get information about it. And they haven't had as many people apply as they'd like, and they have money to give away to creative ideas. So you just have to have a good idea, arts, culture, science, technology, how you think you do city, I mean, to the kid, you know, how you, it could be, how you could give it to the children, to the kids, anyone, K through twelve. You just pick, so check it out and you apply because the money's there for.
Thank you. Counsel Flood.
Just briefly, I, I have to say it because every time we talk about the cleanup and the nip bottles, it does come to the top of my mind that I, I would like everybody to keep in mind another issue that is in our community and that COVID has really affected that our friends and neighbors who are in the recovery community. These nip bottles are evidence of a larger problem that has gone unaddressed for a lot of folks. So as things open up and as meetings open up and resources open up, I'd just like us all to try to become more aware of what resources are out there and which directions we can point folks to. Because it's certainly an ecological problem, but there's also a very significant social problem and health problem. And just every time I hear that announcement, I, I'm just moved to call that to our attention. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Flood. I also want to make an announcement. I have been working at the North Hampton Vaccination Clinic, which is our regional clinic, serving the greater Hampshire County area. And I want to call attention to the fact that we have multiple appointments available tomorrow and Saturday for anyone who would like to make a first appointment for their vaccination. We're a little concerned that the volume is dropping dramatically and we don't understand what that phenomenon is, and I hope it's temporary, but I really want to encourage everyone. It's making an impact to have people vaccinated. And the more we can get to herd immunity, the better we can get back to our lives, the way we knew and love them, perhaps love them more in the future. But you can go on northhamptonma.gov and there are a couple of links on that main page that will get you to the vaccination clinic site. And then there is a blue box, I think it's blue, in the middle that will say to make an appointment for actually today or tomorrow or Saturday. Click there. You answer a few questions and you will have an appointment. So I encourage anyone who has not yet made their first appointment to certainly, any friends that you have, anyone that you know of, please encourage them to go out to that site. I went out to the state site today and saw that it listed North Hampton as being fully that had no availability. So that could be causing some problems with us getting people to make appointments. So really encourage you, if you have any difficulties and you need help, please reach out to the East Hampton Health Department at health@easthamptonma.gov. Jackie Sinkowitz, who is a COVID angel and a vaccine angel, will help you. You can also directly email me at mconiff@easthamptonma.gov. And I am also helping Jackie with making appointments for folks. So really want to encourage people to get out there. It's, it's become significantly easier to make appointments. And if you, if you struggle, we can, we can get you in. So just wanted to make that appointment, make that message tonight. Okay, anything else for announcements? Okay. All right, the mayor is not available. She had to leave. She was going to speak to the 2020 employee status report, but the HR director has taken ill this afternoon and this evening. So we're going to table that for another meeting. And the mayor is also unavailable. So we will move right into reports of standing committees. And Counselor Wrist, finding.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to first announce that we have, I'm going to share the screen, upcoming finance meetings. Sorry. And they're coming up on the budget. May twelfth is Public Works Enterprise and Cultural Recreation. May thirteenth is Public Safety and Human Services. May seventeenth is Education Debt and Interest and Unclassified. May twenty-fourth is Revenue and General Government, and we're going to vote on everything on May twenty-sixth. Also, I will be announcing new business and we will be dealing with that on the May twelfth meeting. Under new business, first I'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing. I'm sorry, to move the new, the fiscal year twenty-two budget to the finance committee and to set a and to set a public hearing for June. I want to make sure I get the right date, June 2nd in these chambers, in these chambers. Let's hope that's happening. Anyway, that's a motion to send the budget to Finance and to set a public hearing on June 2nd.
Second.
Motion second to send the budget to the Finance Committee and to set a public hearing for June 2nd. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Yeah, yeah.
Owen Zarek.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Erica Flood.
Aye.
Wilmar Gomez.
Aye.
Tom Peak. Tom Peak.
Aye.
And Dan Rist.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Also, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion as a first reading. We have before its new business, which is a supplemental appropriation. The amount requested is $100,000 to be transferred from Fund 87 Cannabis Stabilization, $100,000 to be transferred to the Legal Professional Services Account, $100,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: to cover the deficit for legal expenses that increase due to staff needs during the pandemic, including police CBA negotiations, policy review resulting from mayor's pledge recommendations, Union Street easement reviews, and monthly fat fees. I move that this be sent to the Finance Committee for review as well as a public hearing for our next meeting.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second to move the $100,000 supplemental appropriation to Finance and to set a public hearing for May 19th, the May 19th City Council meeting. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Owen Zarek.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Erica Flood.
Aye.
Wilmar Gomez.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Madam President, that concludes.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm just checking my agenda briefly. Okay. Oh, Counsel Rist, I just wanted, when you were reading off all of the dates for the finance meetings, I just, for the public, I want it to be really clear that when you said May 26th, we're voting on it. That's the committee vote, not the city council vote. The city council vote will be June 2nd unless we continue the public hearing.
Thank you, Madam President, for that clarification.
And Public Safety, Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Madam President. We met on April 26th and we start have the discussion about the Major's Pledge Group report. We have a really good input from the community and from the police department. The first, we start talking about the first recommendation that is invest in community-led non-police response to health and safety concerns. We're going to keep discussing the others, recommendation from the report. We're going to have a meeting tomorrow. The meeting is going to be at 7:00 PM and encourage the public, the police department, and the counselors to be part of it because I think this is really important for our community and for our safety. And that concludes.
Thank you, Counsel Gomez. Tomorrow at 7?
Tomorrow at 7:00 PM.
Okay, thank you. Appointment, Counsel Rothschild.
Is this where I make the recommendations?
Yes.
Okay. So our ad hoc committee came to a decision and we're pleased to recommend Hadal Patel to be appointed the auditor for the city of East Hampton. As you all know, she has been serving as the Assistant City Auditor, so she has knowledge and experience with our city systems and departments. She's very passionate about accounting and we're pleased that she is going to be stepping forward as the city auditor. And we are recommending a term ending August 31, 2022. So we'll have an option to reappoint at that time after she's had experience as a full city auditor for a full budget cycle. And we're optimistic that that will be a positive at that point. So that's it.
Hadal is here. If anyone has any questions. We typically, when we have city council appointments, we offer the city counselors any opportunity to ask questions of the candidate. If you would like to, you certainly don't have to, but I'm offering that right now. Hadal, I think you're going to get off the hook pretty easy. You're on mute, but it's good that you put your camera on so we can all see you.
Yeah.
I want to just put in a plug for Hadal as well. You know, when you think about a city finance group or anyone who's dealing with the money and the pluses and the minuses and all of that, you know, you'd like to think that the person sitting in that chair has high ethics and thinks about doing the right thing and not the thing that maybe is the most popular thing or something that will make somebody else's life easier. Hadal is that person, and I've not seen anyone who really wants to make sure that the pluses and minuses balance as much as she does. She takes it very personally if there's anything incorrect or wrong. And so I want to endorse Hadal in this position. And really, the only reason we're doing an 18-month or a 17-month is because she's moving up from assistant and we really want to see and let her get through an entire annual financial cycle. But I have no doubt that there will be no problem doing a three-year appointment next year. So thank you, Hadal, for all that you've done to keep us afloat right now.
You're most welcome.
And I'm looking forward to working with you in your new capacity. So thank you. Counsel Rist.
I want to echo what Counsel Coniff has said, and I appreciate Hadal. One of the other things that I appreciate is that I have learned that her cooperation with our treasurer and the other financial members has been excellent. And I look forward to her learning and her willingness to learn, her willingness to ask questions and not feel that the asking of questions indicates a weakness. She understands that she is growing in the position. And I appreciate the ad hoc committee's confidence, and I have a lot of confidence that Hadal will go forward. I have one other comment to make which regards the fact that we've done this search. First, I have to thank the ad hoc committee and especially Lindsey's appointments committee for both searches for council officers. I have heard that there are some that may think that this wasn't necessary, but according to the charter, it is. And the last time we had to pick an auditor for Val Bernier, I dropped the ball. I was a Rules Committee Chairman and I did not force an ad hoc committee to elect, which the charter says we should elect under Section 28, from a list of candidates. We had always done that for the assessor, but we did not do it at the time. And I'm glad we're doing it now. I only say this now because this is a legislative act that is important to maintain our independent and our council authority for the three officers we appoint and for the future counselors. If one of these positions becomes vacant, it's important that we take on this role. And I feel badly that I didn't force the issue back then, but we did get a good auditor in Val anyway. But I just wanted to make that comment. If this position becomes vacant again, we still have to do this. And thank you, Lindsey, and your committees for both of the positions. It's quite unusual that we had two council officers we had to appoint. Thank you.
Counsel Gomez.
Thank you, Madam President. I had the opportunity to interview her like two years ago when I was part of the appointment committee. And I have to say a good thing about her. First, I'm super happy that she is going to take this position because her education is amazing, her professionalism is amazing, and her ethic is amazing. So I'm more than happy, I'm more than happy to say yes for this appointment.
Thank you, Counsel Gomez.
I just wanted to add, President Coniff, we were lucky to have our member of the public served on our ad hoc committee with us, Greg Rowland, who is in the accounting field, which is always good to have someone from the field when you're interviewing about something. And it was great to hear his perspective and his full endorsement of Hadal. Feeling like even as a member of the public, I feel confident that we have an ethical person in, you know, managing our city's finances. And he felt confident in her strong ethical compass and her strong passion for accounting. So she definitely gave Hadal a full endorsement. I just wanted to add that.
Do you want to make a motion, Counsel?
I would like to make a motion that we appoint Hadal Patel as a city auditor for the city of East Hampton with a term expiration August 31st, 2022.
Second.
Motion is second to approve Hadal Patel as the city auditor. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Erica Flood.
Aye.
Wilmar Gomez.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Aye.
And Owen Zarek.
Yes.
Motion passes. Hadal is our new city auditor. Thank you so much, Hadal, for coming. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Take care.
You too. Bye.
Okay. Do you have any, you don't have any new appointments coming up, do you?
Nope. So that concludes.
Thank you.
Oh, I just want to add, our agenda items expiring, but I think that's okay.
11H, why is that okay?
Because we're not talking about anymore.
You want it removed without prejudice?
Yeah, I don't know what happens when it expires.
Well, we can remove it in general or remove it without prejudice.
I'll remove it without, I would make a motion to remove it without prejudice in case it gets bounced back.
Second.
Madam President, point of order.
Counsel Rist.
She already did have prejudice because she wants it to be approved by the Rules Committee. So I believe this is just clerical. You don't have to remove it.
Oh, because it's in the Rules Committee?
The government relations.
We'll just take it off.
You just have to remove it.
That's fine.
It shouldn't exist.
I see what you're saying.
Thanks, Dan.
I thought last, I totally forgot it was in rules. Thank you, Dan. I thought it was left on purpose last time because I wasn't clear about that. So I can just take it off. Thank God somebody's paying attention tonight.
Yeah, point of record, it was left on the agenda last time for some reason. I don't know why, but.
It was because someone said, oh, somebody said, well, it might come back, so you might as well leave it, but it's expiring. So I feel like it's going to expire. Okay, so I don't know. Bye. We're done.
Okay, ordinance, Counsel Derby.
Thank you, Madam President. So the ordinance committee met last night and we discussed two of the items that are on our agenda. The 15% affordable housing requirement and the accessory dwelling unit requirement. And just so, full disclosure, we, all of the items on our agenda, we have joint public hearing with on May 11th at 6:00 PM. So all of the things that are, we're currently discussing, we are in coordination with the planning board to work out. And so those are probably going to, I think that cannabis delivery is probably going to get wrapped up with the planning board on the 11th. And I think that we're probably going to tackle the accessory dwelling unit with kind of an introduction to the other affordable housing proposal with the planning board on the 11th. I did notice that I'm going to ask for a 60-day extension for two of the items on our agenda, which expire on the 18th, and I believe our next meeting is on the 19th. So in the form of motion, I would like to request 60 days for those, to the multifamily and the accessory dwelling unit.
Motion is second to extend the agenda item for multifamily units and special permit for ADAs.
Accessory dwelling.
Any further discussion? Barbara.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Erica Flood.
Aye.
Wilmar Gomez.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zarek.
Yes.
And Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Perfect. Looks like Dan had a question.
Counsel Rist.
Salem, just a question on the timeline for the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. I think you said it's going to be hopefully dealt with with your joint committee meeting. Do you think it will be after that going to legal and then going, coming to us maybe for June? Because I just know that hopefully we only have one meeting in June. And I'm just curious, what's your optimism with regard to the timeline?
You know, I mean, I have my crystal ball here and it's a little cloudy because, you know, it really depends on how the planning board receives it and, you know, what type of questions and issues that we need to address in conjunction with them. I would say, since we have these two housing amendments, zoning amendments, you know, I think that there's a chance that the accessory dwelling unit, one, we're going to tackle first. And so there's a chance that they might come to a decision on that and send us their recommendation, which generally is the thing that's going to trigger the attorney review and then bringing it to the full council. It's optimistic to think that we're going to get it for the June, but it's not out of the question. And that's as murky of an answer as I can possibly give.
The only concern that I have is the depth and breadth of the June 6th meeting, given that we will be approving the budget that night, and that could be a very long meeting. But it's fine. We've powered through longer meetings, so we can power through that one. Counsel Zarek.
Just to add, I think I would expect potentially that the cannabis delivery would be ready for the first June meeting. I think we're wrapping that up, just to add that in there in case people are wondering about public hearings.
Yep.
All right. Counsel Derby.
It looks like Dan has another question, so.
Do you want to give the, do you want to give the committee report for ordinance?
I have a legitimate question, Madam President.
You did. Go for it.
Comment. The reason I asked the question is the building, we're in a building for the summer and if we can get ADUs passed in June, it really makes it possible that people could start building them this summer. And that was my concern. Thank you.
And I would say that's a fair concern. And I'm not, you know, if we get, if it looks like the first, if we're only having one meeting in June, if it looks like it is going to be ready and it looks like the delivery is going to be ready, I think I would, you know, possibly inquire with the president to see if we could do a short special meeting for those two items.
Yep.
And that way we could, you know, spread it out and, but also make sure that we're doing these things in a timely manner.
Sure.
So, all right. And that concludes.
We'll see where it plays out, how it plays out.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you. Property, Counsel Zarek.
Thank you, President Coniff. The two, we have three items, two of which were addressed previously in our public hearings. At our meeting Monday, we also discussed the Eversource gas easement request for the school project. I was told that this just requires a council vote, did not require a public hearing, which is why we didn't set one for today. The planner is here to discuss this a little further. Essentially, just as some background, as you may or may not remember, we approved prior electrical easements at the new school project, underground easements, which were actually referred to earlier in our discussion. And what we need to be able to bring new gas infrastructure into the Mountain View Maple School Project, also known as White Brook Middle School. And so a request is given to us to approve the mayor to enter into negotiations with Eversource to, for an easement onto that property. We discussed this. There weren't many, many questions. There were two members of the school building committee there as well as our planner, who is here tonight. And we voted 2-0 to recommend to the council to approve a vote to allow the mayor to enter into discussion with, with Eversource, sorry, with the utility provider to negotiate the easement. So with your permission, President Coniff, I'd like to turn it over to the planner just to provide more information.
I'm making you a co-host, Jeff, on the hope and wish that you have something to share with us from a visual perspective.
Yeah, I will show a map. Thank you, Counsel Zarek, for the introduction. I mean, this is pretty straightforward. This is to bring natural gas from Park Street down the driveway to the school. And this, there was an easement, there's easement language in the map and it was in the April 21st packet. And so what we're trying to get, the council, more easement language that's farther along. And I think we actually succeeded pretty well on this time that the Eversource language is in place. The fine tuning. The fine tuning, um, the negotiation in this case is probably expected to be very minimal, if at all. Uh, but on Monday, the, the contractors for the school just asked for the vote to be, um, generally in accordance with the language, just in case in the coming days there's any minor tweaks before it gets recorded. But I'll show the image. It came up a little bit earlier, but, um, the, the crescent shape along the top of Park Street here is the parcel that was acquired from, from, uh, Williston. So this is gonna go underground, um, down the pathway to the new school. And from the discussion on Monday, um, this, this item is, is pretty critical, apparently, as is the pole relocation that the council dealt with earlier. By way of quick reference, um, we are working on press release and some information to announce that the roundabout is gonna start construction activity again on Monday. Seems like the first couple of days would be kind of light activity, but then the traffic pattern's gonna change to sort of one lane alternating traffic. Um, and the, the contractors are looking to get the roundabout, um, fully constructed by August. So there'll be more information trickling out in terms of outreach to the community. Uh, we talked about a Facebook video and some other outreach, press release and Gazette, a reminder to, to ma- make people a little bit aware that the traffic pattern on Park Street's gonna change. But the easement's pretty straightforward, it's gonna run down. Um, there was a quick conversation on Monday about, you know, the, the proximity of the easement to, to this, uh, parcel here, but in reality, in the scale, um, it's not really that close, and this is a 20-foot wide easement with the gas lines kind of running in the middle, so, um, that was the one kind of question that we really heard on Monday. I think there were supposed to be reps from the school building committee here, but there might have been some miscommunication, so, um, I think, um, I am prepared to answer any questions or just shepherd the vote through.
Does anyone have any questions? Counselor Rist.
Jeff, is that pipe already under the pavement? Am I misunderstanding this?
My understanding from the conversations is that the, the school did have some utility, some gas, but this is a new service, it's bigger, and it's just gonna run, um, they're gonna run a new line. So if, if they're excavating, if they haven't already, the old pipe's gonna be removed and this'll be a new pipe.
Well, my point is, they've already built the driveway, so I'm assuming this easement is not under the driveway exactly, or are they tearing up what they've already done? I guess I don't understand.
We asked them and it, it didn't seem abundantly clear, but they, there is a grass strip between the driveway and the 10-foot wide multi-use path, and so what they said is that they're aiming for it to go down there.
Okay, good. I just did one, all right, thank you.
But I mean, I am not, uh, the contractor, so, you know, in, in the event that they have to rip open the, the multi-use path, I'm, I'm sure they're gonna do it and then repair it. Um, because I think they're, reached this critical point in the process that this goes in, um, starting at the roundabout.
Does anybody have any other questions? Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Rist, uh, Counselor Zaret.
Just as a, did you, President, did you ask for any public input?
It's not a public hearing.
Oh, okay. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion, uh, let me find my language. I'd like to make a motion to allow the mayor to enter into an easement agreement, uh, generally in accordance with the language provided in the April.
21st.
21st, thank you, packet. As much as possible and as presented in the documents submitted by EverSource.
Second. Motion is second to request that the mayor approve the easement for the gas line for the new school. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Uh, first, Owen, can you send that to me, please?
That language?
Your motion?
Sure.
Okay, tonight? Okay.
Uh, yeah, yes.
Okay, thank you. Erica Flood.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan, Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Uh, we do not have another meeting scheduled, we have no new business, so this concludes.
Thank you, Counselor Zaret. Rules and Government Relations, Counselor Pete.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, we have not met since, uh, our last meeting, and I don't think we're probably gonna meet until our next meeting because looking at the calendar, uh, my other two esteemed colleagues have finance meetings or I have an ordinance meeting, uh, nearly every day between now and then, so, um, looks like that's probably not gonna happen, but I still would like to request a 30-day extension on, um, these two items, the, uh, the pilot program and the anti-bias training, uh, because they'll expire before, uh, well, they're, they're, I think, yes, they're gonna expire before our next meeting, so, or on our next meeting. So, at this time, I'd, I'd like to request a 30-day extension for both those items.
Second.
Motion is second to extend the resolution for pilot tax, taxes, payment in lieu of taxes and the anti-bias training 30 days. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Erica Flood.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And, uh, this concludes.
Thank you. Uh, we have a few ad hoc committees, I don't know, is there anything ranked to postpone, Counselor Pete, that you would like?
Nothing to report.
Um, senior tax workoff, uh, I'm not ready to dissolve that committee yet, but we're close to dissolving the committee. A lot of the work for the senior tax workoff now is in the hands of the, uh, Council on Aging Board of Directors, and they are working on the plan, the process, things of that nature. I, uh, I'm also working with some marketing to try and get it off the ground, but although the committee is still formed, it hasn't met, but we're gonna make a decision probably in the next month whether to dissolve that committee. Uh, the ordinance review committee, uh, Counselor Rothschild.
We met this past Monday, we discussed chapter nine, I believe. Um, we are meeting again on Tuesday, May 18th at 6:30, and we'll be moving on to chapter 11, animal control. We held off till Barb was back from vacation, because I know this is a meaty chapter, so Barb has a lot of input, so, she has input on the animal control chapter, please join us on May 18th at 6:30. Thank you, this concludes.
Great, thank you. Um, and I guess at this point, we could dissolve, we could make a motion to dissolve the city auditor selection committee.
So moved.
Bye.
Second.
Okay.
All right, any discussion? Barbara.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.